Thank you, Cat TV. Good evening. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board's meeting on February 24th. We're at the Bennington Fire Facility. I am Don Campbell, the Chair of this Board, and I'd like to ask everybody to introduce themselves. Why don't we start with you, Chad?
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hello, Bruce Lee Clark.
And I'm Jean Conner.
And I'm Stuart, our Town Manager.
And I'm Nancy White, my Secretary.
Thank you very much for being here.
Never.
Never, that's right.
You best for once.
So, the first order of business tonight is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jean, would you be willing to yes, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on the ground, and in its goal, with liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Let's move immediately to our consent agenda. This is the minutes of February 10th, and the warrants circulated, and the liquor licenses. So I have asked Stuart if we could, rather than doing the liquor licenses as the last thing, we've asked to put it into the consent agenda, which doesn't mean we don't consider it, it just means you have a chance to consider it ahead of time, and we can pass it all together. So, if you have any comments that you haven't already given to Nancy besides ISEP, and if you have any comments for Stuart on the warrants which you have not already had a chance to ask him about, which he was generous with his time with me this afternoon, I would welcome those comments at this point. Nothing? In that case, I'd look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as circulated.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next, Chair, I'm going to circulate the liquor licenses for your signatures.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And there are two renewals only.
The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. We thank you to those of you who have signed up to speak tonight. This is our moment when we make time for people to talk about things that are not already on the agenda. We do ask you to keep your comments brief, please, and refrain from making any personal attacks. Thank you, Jim. So the first person on this list is Ms. Harrington.
I have a question, well, a statement about the warrants, and I wasn't sure if I should raise it.
Please come to the microphone.
Oh, sure. Come up to the mic and you can ask, yep.
I just, as I was going through things this afternoon, I noticed a couple of things, and I was just wondering, there seems to be a lot of legal fees. Is that regular, that we have all those every single month? There's a $10,000 fee that seems to be regularly occurring, and then there was a $7,000 easement fee for, well, for easement work, and I was wondering if that, I'm hoping that's not for the redrawing of the Tiff District, because that was supposed to be no charge per the Assistant Town Manager. And I was just wondering also, there was a $30,000 excavator purchase and an $11,000 server purchase. And are we competitively looking around and researching to make sure we're getting the best prices for our money? And also, $3,200 in sweatshirts, I just thought that was, seemed like a very high price, especially in light that we have homeless people, you know, that are dying currently in town. And, I mean, that's really basically the things that jumped out at me that, you know, I thought I'd like further clarification on. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, just if I could, you're absolutely welcome to ask questions about warrants at any time. The way this works best is if you have a question about the warrants is to contact Stuart directly, then he can look up the line item and can tell you exactly what went into that line item. So it's a little awkward to come to the meeting and ask him to try to recreate that without having all of his ledger books and everything here, as you know, being an accountant and whatnot. But, so I think anybody is welcome to look at the warrants, be in touch with Stuart ahead of the meeting if you have questions, and as we do, which, so we try not to bring all that stuff into the meeting, to keep the meeting moving. But Stuart, do you have any, I mean, we know that there's competitive process for all these things, we know that the town has ongoing legal costs, but do you want to make any quick replies to that comment, other than to invite Ms. Harrington to contact you if she has specific questions?
Well, yeah, for specific questions, I think Colleen can contact me, and she did today, earlier. She asked that question of me today about the $7,000 easement expense. We had to acquire an easement to be able to access efficiently our lands that are up in the southeast corner of Woodford and Stamford. It's a woodlot that we have, you've all seen the woodlot plan, we had the, Forester here to explain the plan, and in order to get there efficiently without having to build a whole host of roads, this was the best way to do it. So, we have settled with the property owner for a cost of $7,000 to acquire an easement across his property, which will gain access to not only our lands, but effectively other property owners' lands that are up in that section of the community. Legal fees are ongoing, it really depends on what is going on and what's facing us. And all of the purchases that were mentioned are all bid, they are all budgeted for, so these are not, should not be surprises for you folks after going through the budget, but they do show up as an expenditure when those invoices come in. And I don't remember every question you asked, Colleen, but call me in the morning or send me an email in the morning, I can give you the actual specifics.
Thank you.
The warrants are difficult to read, there's no question about it, but yeah, do feel free to contact him. Next up, Kevin Hoy.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Cat TV, fellow Vermonters. I guess I want to start out tonight by saying how important it is for people to vote. Even if you're like me and you don't have complete faith in the system, I want to be clear that I want to discourage anybody from voting, especially in a year like 2020 coming up, March election a week away, very important. Our audit from the 2018 election, we had a lot of people that didn't vote, but we found out someone else voted for them. I know you guys don't want to talk about that, but I want to jump forward to the, again, we're a week away from our March 2020 election, and I have some concerns. My problem is I'm not really sure to go, where to go as a citizen anymore, because I don't want to come to you guys and get laughed at. But there's some things I guess I want the people, right, people at home at Cat TV to know about for sure. Starting with the fact that, on average, for March election, we have 200 or 300 absentee ballots. On a banner year, a record-breaking year, like the November 2018 election, we had a record-breaking 1,100, which I think is incredibly high for only having 5,000 voters. For some strange reason, our clerk has ordered 4,800 absentee ballots for the March election. I find that suspicious, I find it an incredible waste of money. Another issue that I want to bring light to everybody is just one of our latest absentee voters. We had our first out-of-country voter a couple days ago, she asked for an absentee to vote here in our Bennington elections. This is a woman from Australia. Her address that was listed by her town clerk was a Main Street address. She hasn't lived there for quite some time. In fact, we've looked, we're still looking, right, still ongoing, our investigation, but we can't find any records of this woman anywhere in the United States, right, all 50 states. When our clerk wrote her new entry into this year's 2020 elections, she actually didn't list anything. She changed the address to Leonard Street. Leonard Street is this woman's home in Australia, where she's currently living. I'm sure I'm going to be told it's an expatriate vote, and again, just calling it now without any evidence or nothing up. I'm betting it's going to be linked back to Bennington College, it's probably another deal where we've got somebody that's not in our community that's been making votes for a number of years. So I want to restore faith in the people that we're going to be watching the elections this year, we're already watching, and I'm not happy with what I'm seeing. I would love for the Board of Civil Authority, right, for the, you guys, the Select Board, you can call these meetings, for someone of authority besides Mr. Jarvis and Powell, to actually stand up and look at this very serious and real issue. Because I don't trust our elections, and again, it's important for people to vote, but it's important you guys actually do your job, too. Thanks.
Donald, he has a misunderstanding.
I know, there are several misunderstandings.
Well, there were 4,800 and some odd ballots ordered for the entire election, those are not the absentees, and that is a misunderstanding.
We were told by Cassie in writing that she ordered 4,800 absentee ballots for the March election alone, and again, Stuart, even 5,000. I guess you guys are expecting a record turnout again, huh?
Well, it's a presidential primary election, we would expect.
No, this is the March election, don't try to confuse the public.
It's also the primary.
It's also the presidential primary, so we expect that there'll be a higher turnout this year.
Yeah. Well, again, I think it's way out of bounds, and again, the woman that I gave you from Australia is one name, it's just one, but I don't think she's, we have no records that this woman has ever lived in Vermont State, never, or the United States, we don't even know if she's a citizen, so we'll be questioning on that, and Cassie still. And again, these are concerns that I have, and it's repetition. These are the same things that we found in the 2018 elections. I know you guys don't want to hear about it, but there's some serious issues going on. How did Kim Andrews, there's one Kim Andrews in Bennington, one listed, we have two of them voting. Okay, I know, time is an issue when you're under the gun, isn't it, Don? This is a serious issue, and where is there any place for people to talk? Where can I come and tell you guys my concerns and actually get a response and talk back? There's never that venue. This is an issue when you guys control everything, from the clerks to the appeals court, and those people have to take it on the chin. I'm sorry, but I'm not happy with any of this, and we're watching the election, so I want to make sure you guys know that, too. Okay? Thanks.
So, you folks have read the letter from the Secretary of State. You guys have seen Cassie's, Cassie Barbeau's deep analysis of this. You've heard Mr. Hores. I guess I'd just like to know, is there anybody on this board that feels like we should take any of these accusations seriously at this point and look further into them? Because I don't.
I do not.
No.
No.
Okay. So, we, no, we are convinced that we've, you're done, Kevin, you're done.
I didn't know.
Yep, no, you're done. So let's go on to the next person here, which is Sarah Perrin, please.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Good evening, my name's Sarah Perrin, I'm here to reintroduce myself. I'm excited to be running for Select Board and to have the chance to work with the Board to uplift Bennington as a place to live, work, and run a business, to uphold our shared values of transparency, public participation, and decision-making, and objectivity, and innovation. I moved to Bennington 10 years ago and have fallen in love with the community and become passionate about seeing it thrive. I'm a small business owner, a young professional, a property manager, and obviously a taxpayer. I've worked hard to get involved and help build resilience and unity in this community through my volunteer work and through the development of Bennington Food Truck Fest, which I am a co-organizer and have successfully pioneered these past two years. I'm running for the Select Board because I believe that my perspective is one that is not currently represented on the Board. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nancy White.
Hi, I was very surprised to read a couple weeks ago, and a lot of people contacted me and asked me about it, to read that various regional and county groups are starting a program to bring people from other countries, many seeking asylum, to live in Bennington. People asked me if we'd had public hearings about that last year. I don't remember any, did we?
Not that I remember.
I think only through the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies meetings, which were public forums, and I believe there were two in Bennington, two in Wilmington, two in Brattleboro, Bellows Falls, there were, maybe Shaftesbury, there were, there were a lot. So this is, so this was a, this was a strategy that came out of the SEDS proposal, so it's listed, so that would have been a place where it would have been discussed, it wasn't at a town level.
I understand, but with the need being so high in Bennington, to hear that we have the resources to bring people from other country to Bennington, and not have had public hearings so that we could, I've got the report with me. I would think that you would have had informational meetings, you would have listened to comments and questions from citizens before they would have started this process. Is this going to be something that we will vote on as a community before it goes forward?
It's not a town initiative, Nancy, this is not something that the town of Bennington or the Select Board is initiating, I'm sorry. This is, this is something that's coming out of the Southern Economic Development.
But again, this is the town of Bennington, why do we have county and regional groups dictating to us what's going to happen in our town?
They're not, you're not dictating anything.
I'm very aware of the programs, I've read about them for years, but again, we shouldn't have these regional and county groups receiving the state and federal money depending what town gets it and how it's going to get used.
Well, then I think you need to take your argument to the state level.
Yeah, so we're not having those conversations here, and if they do come here, we will certainly engage in them and we'll let you know.
Well, if we're going to move forward in a positive way, you have to all be aware, a similar program was dropped on the people of Rutland a few years ago, and it absolutely tore that town apart. This is a program that the people of Bennington should decide on, not regional and county groups.
Okay. Moving on to the next item agenda, we are going to open a public hearing on the lead service line replacement bond, and this, let me pass that back to Stuart, please, thank you. And this will be something that voters will see on the ballot. Before Jason even starts, I'm just going to remind everybody that this is something that nobody here is going to have to pay for directly, this is, this is fully funded from the state. We would not be putting this on the ballot if it was not fully funded from the state. Okay? So, having said that, and I may say it again at the end, go ahead, Jason, please introduce yourself.
My name is Jason Dolmich, I'm with MSK Engineering Design, presenting for the lead service line replacement project, seeking approval for a bond vote this coming town meeting day. I'm going to give a brief recap of our last presentation, and then we can open it up to questions. So, just as a, providing a background of the statement of the problem that's in the town of Bennington with respect to lead service lines, there are approximately 3,800 connections in the town of Bennington, and approximately 43% of them, or approximately 1,700 units were installed with lead service lines, starting in 1883 and going until approximately the mid-'20s. And several of them have been replaced over the years, but the, there are still many lead service lines left. Over the last year, we've participated in, and the town of Bennington has participated in both a planning grant and a mapping grant, a planning loan, to discover and map the extent of the lead service lines in the town of Bennington. And the latest step that we concluded recently was to reach out to approximately 800, outreach approximately 800 of the units of the 1,600 that we believed could be comprised of lead service lines. And we received about, we received 865 responses, so it was a great response rate, approximately 720 were visually assessed, and we confirmed, out of those 720, we visually confirmed 132 lead service lines in the region. And this map is really bad on a white screen.
It's grim. Should we turn off the lights?
Nah, it's okay. This is, I'm just going to step away here. This is Route 9, going east to west, Route 7 north to south, so center of town. These shaded areas are areas of concern, which includes essentially from Hicks Avenue down to South Street, the sort of settled area of South Street, out into Old Bennington, and approximately to where the Route 279 bypasses. So, we're basically talking about the downtown region of Bennington, having been, having at least one, discovered at least one or several, let's say, visually confirmed lead service lines in that region. So, the purpose of this map, which is poor representation, is to show the sort of geographic extent of where there may be lead service lines in the town of Bennington. So, with all that said, our purpose tonight is to request to the voters to approve a bond vote for the seeking of 100% reimbursable funds for lead service line replacement. So in the past, Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund has only been eligible for municipally-owned facilities, and recently, that, they extended that funding source to the privately-owned facilities if it was for the purpose of replacing lead service lines or lead-containing plumbing elements. And we, they have identified funds that are 100% reimbursable for lead service line replacement funds. So even though this is a bond vote, and you're asking, we essentially are asking for the municipality, or for the voters, to approve a bond, that, that bond, that money will actually not be borrowed, it will be reimbursed before, before any borrowing is required. And the reason why we have to apply for a bond, it seems counterintuitive, is because it's still a step in the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund process. So this is a procedural process that doesn't actually obligate the town to pay for any money, but it will allow essentially the majority, or all, hopefully, when we're done with this project over the next couple of years, of replacing found lead service lines for all private citizens in the town of Bennington that have them. So, it's a great opportunity, it's sort of once-in-a-lifetime, that we're, we're on, Bennington being proactive for the last couple of years, and the discovery of their, of lead service line and to mapping the extent of the issue is sort of right at the front gate of looking and receiving this money, so it's, we should take it.
In case there's any bond fatigue in this community, I would like to read this Article 2, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So, so what you'll see on the ballot is Article 2. Shall the bonds of the town of Bennington in an amount not to exceed 9.5 million be issued for the purpose of replacing lead service lines throughout the town, such monies expended to be fully reimbursed from the state and federal grant funds? Yes or no? So, when you hit Article 2, remember that this is, shall we accept 9.5 million dollars from the state and the feds to fix lead lines in Bennington? And I think this Board would strongly urge a yes vote to that Article 2.
Absolutely.
Stuart?
I would just like to add, and to emphasize, these are private lead service lines. This is, this is money that is going through the town of Bennington to the people of Bennington who have private lead service lines, who may in fact not be able to replace them themselves.
Right. Tom? Bruce? Just, just, Jason, so that you and I, and maybe everybody else will be clear, when you were talking about facilities, municipal facilities, I think that's the term you used, and now available for private facilities, those facilities that we're actually talking about is the service, the water line that goes from the curb into my house.
Correct. That's correct.
So, prior to, just recently, that was never able to be reimbursed, never to be replaced. If I was going to replace it, it would be my dollar, right?
We would not be able to even borrow money to do that.
Right. Prior to now.
Correct.
But this vote, just so everybody gets it, this vote allows for the federal money and state money to come in and pay for that lead line replacement for 1,700, at least 1,700 residents, or about, approximately 1,700 residents of the town of Bennington. And we all, I'm assuming, I'm hopeful that we all know exactly how harmful lead is, and lead in the drinking water is, so let's, that's the reason to say yes to this.
And I would only, I would only add, say yes, and, the town of Bennington still is using corrosion control, so they're actively managing their, the lead corrosion issue inside the water system, but, no system's perfect, the easiest way to get rid of it, is the easiest way to deal with it is to get rid of it.
Right.
Donald, I have a question.
Stuart.
That's a good point, Jason. Is there, if this is fully completed, 100%, all lead lines removed, is there an opportunity for the town to reduce the cost of water treatment?
Probably not.
Because of copper in the system?
Because of copper in the system, and because there are, there are other lead-containing elements in the system that we, even, even at the lead service line, you're going to be replacing the most, the highest concentration of potential lead exposure, but there, we can't go, it's unfeasible for us to go in and replace everybody's plumbing that has lead solder in it. So, unfortunately, no.
Nice try, Stuart.
It was a question that occurred to me when I was speaking.
Absolutely.
Pathologically frugal, we like that. So the reason we're here tonight is to, is to approve this state revolving loan programs funding application. This would need a motion for circulation on signatures.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, Bruce, thank you, Jim. So we now have a motion to circulate this for signatures. Any further discussion from the Board?
I'd just like to encourage Jim Tharian to maybe write an article about this, to explain it. I just, I have this fear that people are going to see that and vote no, and not, having not read the ballot item carefully, and I just feel like any way we can possibly get the word out succinctly, so people know and understand, it would be beneficial.
All right, well, go beat up Jim after the meeting.
He's right over there.
Yeah.
Well, Jim has done, Jim has done a great job writing two articles about this project to date, so.
But it needs to be now, right before the vote.
I'll recommend the headline, "Free Money Above the Fold."
All right. All in favor of motion to circulate for signatures, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, for bringing this opportunity, thank you for watching out for our water system, we are, we are grateful for both.
Thank you very much.
Could I just ask, if we've already paid to replace the line ourselves, can we get reimbursed?
Unfortunately, no.
The next item that we are moving on to is number six, the local options tax discussion. I know it feels like we've been talking about this all winter, but we are, we are looking at a process that we set up a while ago, which involved a certain amount of deciding whether or not to put it to the voters, spend some time on that, then deciding what it looks like if we put it to the voters, and then a couple of sessions of listening to townspeople on their priorities, if this did, if this local options tax did pass. And of course, we've had our opportunity to speak to people in the interim, I know there've been a lot of meetings going on, and I thank you all for the work you've done, I know it's been, I know there's been a lot going on. So before we go very far, I'd like to thank Bruce for spending time with me last week to take the, the policy piece that we agreed to. So remember, we agreed to do this in two pieces. One would be setting a policy so that if any of these taxes are approved, there's something in place that dictates how they're spent, or how we decide how they're spent. So that would be the policy on local option tax revenue expenditures. And then we also decided that we were going to spend time thinking about the first year, which would be a transition year, and deciding how we would allocate those funds during the transition year, and knowing that in the fall, we would be beginning the first of annual conversations about how the community would like to spend these funds. The reason we're doing it this way, the interim year, is because we don't want to count our chickens before they're hatched. We want to make sure that, before we spend a lot of time and a lot of community energy and emotion on deciding how this money should be spent, it's important that we either have a local options tax, or we don't. And so what we're, what I'd like to put forward tonight is something, and Jean, would you be willing to read this if I asked you to? Would you be willing to read it out loud, or shall I ask Bruce?
Sure.
I would just ask Bruce to read it.
Well, we can trade off.
Let's just get one person.
Right, I'm happy to read.
So, I think for the purposes of this conversation, it would be helpful if everybody was able to hear this. And this is the, this is what Bruce and I came up with as a, making what Shannon had originally put forward and what we had agreed to, putting it into policy format. And I guess, you know, we'd be looking to move forward with this if this feels right, and then go into a conversation about how hypothetical allocations would be, how hypothetical funds would be allocated if anything is passed.
Well, it's safe to assume that we'll post this on the Bennington.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The packets are in the packets.
Yes, but, yeah, so it is available through the town, right? So, Jeanne, would you be willing to read this?
Sure.
Just so everybody has a, has a concept of what we're talking about. I know it's a little bit repetitive to our previous meetings, but.
Actually, I think it's great to read it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, "Policy on Local Option Tax Revenue Expenditures. Section 1, Purpose. The Select Board of the Town of Bennington recognizes the importance of community participation and discussion regarding the expenditures of any potential local option tax revenue. The Select Board intends that all expenditures of the local option tax revenue shall be used in accordance with annually established spending guidelines. To foster and encourage community participation and to establish these spending guidelines, the Select Board hereby adopts the following. Section 2, Policy. A, the Select Board shall hold at least two public meetings prior to the development of the first draft budget in order to encourage public participation in establishing priorities for the expenditure of local option tax revenue. B, the Select Board shall establish the spending guidelines for the next tax year prior to the ballot warning deadline. C, the local option tax revenues will be held in reserve and may only be spent in accordance with the agreed-upon annual spending guidelines for that tax year. D, the Select Board may, in the case of an emergency situation such as Tropical Storm Irene, deviate from the annual spending guidelines in order to accommodate emergency expenditures. Three, Definitions. The local option tax is a 1% tax added to any of the four options approved by the voters of the town of Bennington: sales, rooms, meals, and alcohol. They are collected by the state of Vermont, and 70% of the amount is remitted to the town on a quarterly basis. B, spending guidelines are stated percentages of the local option tax revenue that establish the spending priorities of the Select Board for this revenue on an annual basis.
Thank you, Jeanne. That's great. So, board, did we catch, this is, this is all stuff we talked about before? Did we catch, adequately catch the tenor of that, those conversations?
Yeah, I just have a really quick question, and this may be the standard for policies, but could the definitions, should the definitions be maybe part two? It would have been helpful, as you were reading this, if you knew how the definitions, I didn't know if it had to be last.
No, it can be any place you want.
And I was just thinking, when you're reading it, it would be nice if you understood what you were reading about before you read it.
They could be first, I mean, but they could be.
That's just a little, maybe second.
They could be second.
I'm at bed, Lon.
I don't care.
I don't really care either. It just seemed weird that you've read the whole policy and then you're learning what you were reading.
Well, quite often definitions come at the end, but it's not, we don't, we can do it any way we want.
Gosh darn it, can I ask a question about section two?
I think Jean makes a good point, and legislation, when it's developed and non-fearier, definitions come first.
All right.
By and large.
Do you want to put it before purpose?
It didn't.
Really?
I don't want to put it before.
Let's put the purpose first.
Okay. All right, can I ask a question about policy, about, is section A? So, it says the Select Board shall hold at least two public meetings prior to the development of the first draft budget. What is the, is the first draft budget?
So, this is trying, this is trying to make sure.
Yep.
That the conversations happen in a meaningful timeframe before the first draft budget that, that the town comes up with is baked. In other words, if, if the community really wants to do something and the, and the town staff have already kind of put a lot of effort into their budget, there's going to be, it's going to waste a lot of time and energy.
Okay.
So, we want that happening before that.
All right, and so, the, the first draft of the budget is completed by October, right? You get everything, you get everything from the departments in October?
Yeah, but I generally don't finish, finish getting all of those until just before Thanksgiving.
So, November. So, I'm just saying that that would mean these hearings would be in.
Right, but the first draft of the budget that you folks see comes to you generally just before the Christmas holidays.
Right, so I'm just trying to think about the timing on this and making sure that it's not going to be like Christmas Eve. So, we're talking October for those hearings then?
From a staff perspective, I think it would be helpful to have those conversations in October.
Okay, I just wanted to.
So, I don't, I would be reluctant to.
I don't want to say when.
Put that into the policy.
I just wanted, I just wanted to know what it.
Because things might change.
Yeah.
The guiding principle is it happens before the budget really gets cooked.
Yeah, no, that works for me. Okay.
Other questions from the board? No? Any questions from the audience? Come on up. Come to the mic, please. Yeah, introduce yourself, do the whole thing.
Hi, my name is Dane Whitman, and just a comment as far as the Hurricane Irene disaster thing. I'm thinking maybe you could flush out a little bit more what the definition of emergency disaster is beyond that. That's just my comment. Thank you.
I mean, we could use Red Cross as a, I mean, there are emergency disaster definitions.
I must admit, I found none that I liked.
No, Red Cross.
As much as, at least at the moment, when we think about, and it was Tropical Storm Irene, when we think about that, we understand that when we lost water, at least a chunk of our water supply, that was, I would consider, an emergency. But if there's a better definition than experience, sure. I just couldn't find one that I liked, and I looked at Red Cross and I didn't, that was set for their needs and not so much for this, but I don't have a feeling.
Stuart, do you have any suggestions on this?
I'm afraid not.
Okay.
The, an emergency for, from a financial perspective for a municipality could run the gamut.
Mm-hmm.
I just, trying to put a definition on that, I think would be incredibly difficult.
So, because, because when we say emergency, we're not talking necessarily about a weather emergency or.
No, it could be any.
It's only limited by what would define as an emergency.
But the intent here is to say that, that it's something big, that it's not.
Right, it's not any.
A car ran out of gas.
It would be my intent that there would be pretty much unanimity in town that this is an emergency. And if there isn't that, then it isn't an emergency. Now, that's, you know, that's as good as my saying it right now, but that's how almost all definitions work, so.
Well, so, Dane, to your point, you know, thank you for bringing it up. I think this is a policy piece, so this would be something that would go into our policy manual. And it is important to state that we, while we would make this our guiding principle and while we would follow this, future select boards could go through a process similar to this and change this.
Absolutely.
So, it's not, I don't want anyone to be, to misunderstand that this becomes a law that can ever be changed.
Oh, absolutely.
For better or for worse, but it's what we can do. It's a policy that we believe will help both the public but also future boards figure out how to do this. So, perhaps we'll figure out how to refine emergency if, if it becomes necessary. Yeah, okay. Okay, Matt, come on up.
Just excuse me if I misunderstood from last Monday. So, I guess, I was on the, I kind of thought that you guys were going to have percentages broken down and then we were going to be.
We're going to do that next.
So, the voters can see what they're going to vote on.
That, Matt, that's step two. This is step one. We're about ready to, if this passes, we'll move to step two, and that's where you want it.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, right, so, forgive me for not explaining that clearly, but really, our, our thinking was that we set up a policy that requires those percentages get explicitly stated every year because of, because it's a transition year, it would be the first year, we'll do it differently this year than any other year. But starting this October, right? This October, if, if any of this passes, none of it may pass, but if any of this passes this October, we'll start having robust conversations about how this could work, about, about not changing the policy but about what the percentage split is. So, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Other questions about the policy, just the policy that we have here?
I just wanted to commend my sense of being light and loose and open to the idea of this being a work in process. It's very gratifying to me, and I want to say that what we're interested in is the redevelopment and the renaissance of our town, and that is the learning of new ways. And I want to admire the Board of Selectmen for their gentle, light-stepped dancing and each of the persons that I've heard speak here. I just think that's a beautiful thing, and I just wanted to underline that because it does feel to me, that helps me just be happy with where we are and what we're doing, even though I feel as though this is a really important inflection opportunity. And so, I have lots of opinions about the right way to do it and the wrong way to do it. So, I just want to share that with you from my thinking over this week.
Before you leave, despite the fact that most positive opinions are anonymous in Bennington, I'd love to ask you to identify.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sheila Harden, Bennington Potters.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
I'm resident.
Somebody who really wants us not to disperse the money as a rebate on our taxes. Somebody who pays a lot of taxes.
You'll get a minute to, you'll get a minute to talk about that. Okay. We're just talking about policy at this point. We will talk about priorities in a minute, hypothetical priorities. Thank you for that. Okay, come on up to the mic, please. Yeah, thank you, Laura.
Laura Block, Bennington. I wanted to build on what Sheila said last at the open forum because she really made me think differently, and I'm thinking a lot about the policy. I think what I'm going to suggest relates to the policy because I do think that, I hope, I am supporting all of the four options to be voted on because I think the town really could use that money to do great things and to rejuvenate more than even the Putnam Project might do for us. And after, I learned from you, Stu, that, as we all should know, that the local, the taxes that we pay are about three-quarters school tax. Is that, is that the right percentage, you know?
Well, it's closer to two-thirds, yeah.
Two-thirds is the school tax.
Two-thirds, one-third is the generally accepted.
And a third is the property tax. So, even if, and I don't know what the percentages are that you're going to be describing to us in a minute, but I think that, given that, based on this chart you passed out last time, nobody's going to get a lot of money as, individually, as a rebate on our property taxes. It's not going to be millions, no matter what your home value is. So, to disperse that out to individual homeowners, although it looks really cool to be getting money back, it really will not help the town as a whole. So, I really do hope that a good percentage, however you're going to suggest it goes, will go for big projects. And what I'd like to add, because I've been thinking about this after the forum, I was thinking that maybe what you could organize is a Citizens Advisory Committee kind of organization that people could apply to be part of, you know, maybe a five-person Citizens Advisory Committee and with our Community Development Director also and maybe the representative from BBC to be also sort of ex officio part of that. And citizens could be the recipients of project proposals that people in town, whether private businesses or organizations, could vet and present to the Citizens Committee. And then that committee could make a decision about, you know, recommending that their top three choices that then could go to the Select Board for final approval. Because everybody at the forum was talking about having citizens' participation, and you're talking about having open forums, which is a good thing. But then how does that get implemented after that? Do you want to be the ones to just be getting proposals or maybe allowing a Citizens Committee to be the first filter of what everybody would like to see in town? And I was just thinking that that might be a structure that would be a little bit more concrete than what is being discussed right now. So, that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
See where it fits.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I think certainly, community input is very valuable. How we get that, I think, is yet to be worked out. The, you know, democracy is important in terms of who's elected, making decisions. So, we have to be a little bit careful about that. We don't want to end up having a situation where we have unelected people making a lot of decisions, but we could, an advisory situation could be set up, so. That's an idea thrown in the mix. Other comments on the policy?
Kevin Hoyt, Bennington. It's amazing to me, it seems like you guys have sold this thing six ways to Sunday. If you're a property owner, it's going to be a property rebate. If you're a business, it's going to be, well, marketing, right? If you're a developer, it's a capital project. This, again, I'm against this tax. I think it's something else that we can't afford, and this is on the backs of citizens. We might make a little bit off of meals, we might make a little bit off of alcohol, but again, even the meals, it's a very small window, the fall, right? Leaf peak and season, when we get our tourism here. The rest of the time, like eight, nine months a year, those are filled with Vermont residents because nobody else can afford taxes, and we've lost our homes, and now we have, have to be put up in a motel room. So, again, I'm totally against this tax, and I'm wondering as far as the emergency goes, when we have a man die under a bridge in our street, is that considered an emergency? Because I haven't seen anybody do anything about it yet. You haven't even talked about it, or is just, just for $100,000 pocket parks?
So, we will be talking about that very sad event later on this evening, and that's not what we're talking about right now. Right now, what we're talking about is a policy.
Right.
How we would spend these funds if they were approved by the voters.
Right, that seems like we're spending an awful long time and a lot of, it seems to me you guys have already sold this. Seems like you need this money, and we're already talking about.
Sell anything that's going.
How we're going to spend it before we even talked about, and again, when we, when we have this, two meetings you're going to give us? Two meetings before you approve how you're going to spend it? Are there going to be meetings like this? You guys tell us that you wanted to put this in front of the voters to see if we voted on this. That leads me to believe we had an option, that you guys could have just done it. That's not the truth. If you guys wanted this pass, it had to come into voters. You have no choice. We have to vote this in, you guys can't do it. And I don't know, I don't feel like I'm represented. I don't feel like anybody's had a real say at this. I think you guys have sold this already, and again, that's another concern for the, the March elections around the corner and why people need to come out to vote. I'm against this tax, and I don't, I don't trust you guys to spend it. If we look at a job evaluation of how you've done spending over the last couple of years, guys, it doesn't look pretty. We can't afford this anymore. We can't, we can't afford another tax, so, thank you. I mean, I'd love to do these policies. I'd love to do all these projects, and they're great ideas, when we can afford it. $3,000 t-shirts sound great, right? I don't know who those are for, you guys, or if you're going to sell them and make a return. There's never a return. You guys can't, when we have people dying in our streets, how are you spending $3,000? How are you putting $100,000 into a pocket park? You talk about priorities, but I just don't see any.
Okay, you're, you're repeating yourself, but thank you for your comments.
It seems like I have to.
So, the, not seeing any other comments in the audience, I guess I would ask the board, what's their pleasure on, on this proposed policy on local options tax revenue expenditures?
I think it's very thorough, and I think we should vote on it.
I'll second that.
Oh, are you, is this a motion?
That's a motion, yes. It can be a motion.
All right.
It's a statement.
Are you seconding this, Jim?
Yeah.
All right, so we are now in board discussion. Is there any further board discussion about this policy? Again, this would be what, what goes into place and directs any hypothetical future use of local options tax funds in this community. Stuart?
Just to clarify that we're, we're moving the definitions to section two and the policy to section three?
Yes.
And we're fixing the one where typo.
Yeah, there was a typo in there.
Yeah, the word used. One, two, three, the fourth line.
To.
Section.
Shall be used.
Shall be used.
Yes, I read it correctly.
Yes, you did. You did read it correctly.
I.
Okay. So, this seems like solid policy to me, but I guess I'd call a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, now, thank you for that, and I know that took a while to get there, but Bennington, this directs what will happen starting in October. this directs what will happen starting in October. But what we need to know is if the community does vote to move forward with any of these local options taxes, again, people may choose not to, but if the, if the voters choose to move forward with local options taxes, how would we apportion those taxes? And we had a, I can do this by heart, we had a suggestion from our town staff that we considered at several meetings, which looked something like putting 50% of the funds towards property tax reduction, putting 20% of the funds towards debt reduction, putting 20% of the funds towards the necessary replacement of the Willow Park play structure, and putting 10% of the funds towards the ongoing marketing efforts to benefit not just the downtown, but the whole of Bennington. So since then, we've had a number of conversations. We've had fairly substantial conversations, in fact, and the vice chair and I would like to offer a, if I may, Jeannie, would like to offer a slight revision to that. And Bruce, you and I have had a chance to talk about it, I'm not sure, maybe Jim, you and I talked about it? No, we didn't. Anyway, but the, the slight revision, I think, that makes sense to Jeannie and to me, is that we, we look at 50% of the funds going to tax reduction and reducing short-term debt. So the, the short-term debt piece is where we're hitting, we're getting interest, and that's costing taxpayers. So to put 50% towards that, to put 20% towards the replacement of the Willow Park play structure still, and to put 20% towards economic development and new business encouraging, which is something that we heard a lot at the last, at the last meeting, we heard a number of people talking about that, and to put 10% towards the marketing of our, of our community. So that's, that makes sense to us, based on what we heard. There may be other opinions, but I think that's, that's something that we'd like to throw out as a consideration for this board.
Can I just say, so the, under economic development, that could very easily encompass the kinds of ideas that we were talking about last time. Either a big idea or some kind of bring ideas forward, and here's a pot of money that we can help, that we can help seed good ideas that are out there, in whatever fashion, whether that's an advisory committee, whether it's the Select Board doing that, or whatever. But it does feel like we really need to have a dedicated pot of money, you know, whatever that would look like, to really say, here are things that can move us forward, that would really make a difference in how we, in, in the future of this community. So that's, that felt like a very important addition to how we would use the money, or revision of how we would use the money.
And remembering that Wilmington is putting 100% of their money towards, 100% of their local options taxes going towards this kind of work. And so based on the conversations we heard from Ryan and others at the last meeting, it seems like it makes sense to do more of a direct investment in the community. Now, I, I've heard some criticisms this week from people, even one that used to be on this board, who said that there needs to be a bigger vision and a long-term plan for this. And I, I don't disagree with that, but again, it doesn't make any sense to spend a tremendous amount of time, to count your chickens before they hatch. This would have to be an interim situation, a, the first year, the, the year of transition, essentially. And then, starting in October, if we wanted, if, if we had a community conversation that changes the direction, we would have an opportunity to do it at that point. So that's, that's where, that's where Jeannie and I have gotten to. How about other thoughts on this? Chad, do you have any?
Yeah, I tried to watch the forum a little bit last week. It was hard, you know, my surroundings in Florida made it difficult.
Okay, next. Anything?
So sorry, so sorry.
Donald, I, I'm going to disagree. I think you have, I think you have the numbers inverted. I would, just in rough numbers in my head, I would put 20% towards debt reduction and tax relief. I'm thinking the priority for a community park, you know, Willow Park, that's a priority. I think you've seen anything from $100,000 to $300,000. I'd like, so I'm thinking that's like about 30%. And then I would have put 50% aside, not to be spent this year, but that 50%, or half that, at least half that money, should, I don't know, an escrow or some kind of account for economic development, new business growth, and direct a panel. I love that idea. I really think that would be great. And the first check, we're not going to receive until October, November?
That's correct. It'd be the end of October.
So if this passes.
It'd be the end of October.
Yeah, if this passes next week, it doesn't take effect until July. Plenty of time to set a panel, get RFPs in place, plenty of discussion. The first check doesn't come until October. I really think we have to do something big. People have spoken that they want change in economic development, business growth. I really think more money needs to go towards that, and I would say at least 50%.
So you want to cut out marketing?
I think that fits in. I guess I'm thinking that's part of it.
Part of what?
The part of the economic development and business growth. I guess I'm lumping marketing into that. I don't know if people disagree, I think it is the same. To grow business, you have to market the business. So I guess I'm lumping that all together. The marketing, and we already put, what, $50,000 in our budget for marketing, so I don't know if we, if that changes our, our general fund budget for marketing, but I look at it as one piece. So I guess I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I think, I think we are responding, at least in part, to a large volume of people who say, my property taxes are too high. And yes, the impact of this would be relatively small, but what does it look like if we don't do anything to help out with property taxes? So that what happens is the property taxes keep going up at a regular percentage.
I guess, to me, this is the quickest way to grow the grand list, therefore lowering their property taxes.
Growing the grand list is good.
Growing, that's the easiest way to, I think, lower property taxes for everyone else by getting new businesses, or having businesses do renovations, therefore they're, they're paying, you know, it's, growing the grand list is our priority. I think economic development, community development, business growth does that. And this will do it quicker.
Yeah, I agree. So, other, other thoughts?
Go ahead.
With respect to, you know, where we're going to allocate this, I think, should this pass, Willow Park play structure has to be replaced. Otherwise, we are exposing ourselves to any number of lawsuits, should any piece of that fail.
Well, even worse, somebody might get hurt.
Somebody get hurt, exactly. Another thing, that, you know, we had a spike in water and sewer rates because of deferred maintenance of former Select Board members, or Select Boards. And I'd like to see the water rates restored to what they were before that deferred maintenance was mandated by the state of Vermont. If we didn't do those repairs, we would be fined. And if we could restore the water rates to that, I think it would go a long way to making water and sewer and property taxpayers very happy. In addition to that, with this, this money, I'd like to see microloans for small businesses to repopulate Main Street and, and the town in general.
Yeah, in Wilmington, they do microloans, matching grants, a number of other things to try to get new businesses started. You know, some ideas were thrown out at the last meeting about trying to get businesses through that first and difficult year, to get, not just downtown, but to get more business in all of Bennington. Bruce?
I'm, I'm attracted to what Chad has said, and reminding me that the first check doesn't even come until October, which means, I mean, yes, we could work ahead of time this coming year at Willow Park, but it seems to me Willow Park's replacement is not going to take place until probably we have the money in hand, or at least, that's at least one option. So while it would be great to have it all funded out of this first year, I think it's not probably necessary, although some of it, remember, our policy that we just passed, as if we don't expend it, it goes into a reserve fund, so it can't be spent on something else. So thinking that Willow Park could be at 10%, I mean, since, I mean, these percentages, we don't even know what we're talking about in, in terms of the actual amounts.
Because we don't know which, if any, of these taxes.
Right. We don't know what's going to pass, if anything. But I, I am more likely to be supportive of economic development and marketing. And Laura, I was working on a policy of precisely creating that kind of citizens' panel prior to this meeting.
But it's not in the policy, though, is it?
It's not in that policy, because I didn't think it was germane to that. I think it has to be, I think it has to be separate. And so I, that's what I was working on. So great minds think alike, I guess. I would, I, I understand why reducing property tax and, and reducing short-term debt, I am very inclined to reducing short-term debt, because that's interest rate. Those are interest payments that we are making, which will reduce property tax. If you reduce that, that will reduce property tax. I'm also very interested in, in growing the grand list. That, in the long run, is what will be beneficial to taxpayers. So do I have those numbers worked out in my head? No, I do not. But I would reduce the Willow Park assess, park portion of that by, say, 10%, down to 10. And that would leave maybe 40, 50. 40 for property tax and short-term debt reduction, and, and I actually, Jim, I think you're absolutely right on water rates. I've had more people talk to me about, is, would that be possible? Instead of my property tax, can we just reduce the water rates that we raised? So maybe, and I, you know, I don't want to throw Stuart a curve on that, maybe he's thought about that, but I don't know whether it would be meaningful reduction, but, you know, if we put that there, and then that would leave us, what do they have left?
What'd you do?
They've got, he's got 40% for tax and debt.
10, 40, and then 50 for the economic development and marketing. I think that, that adds up to 100, which is my goal.
So, it does.
I'm just a lawyer. I, you know, addition is, is as hard as I go.
You're doing great. So far, you're doing great. Jean, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, but I was, I was, my thoughts were going in the same direction as Bruce. While I don't love the idea of property tax reduction, I think we would get a bigger bang for our buck if we did it through debt, debt reduction and, and the other mechanisms that we've, that we've discussed. It's really hard to, to think about it seriously, because we don't know at this point. But let's just say they all passed, and we, you know, has anyone done the analysis of, of what the benefit would be if we did this versus this, and 50% versus 40%? You know, I don't think anyone really has, because it would be kind of a waste of time at this point. But I guess I'm curious. I had, no one has talked to me positively about 50% property tax reduction. No one has said anything to me about that in a positive, in a positive way. People are talking about the other things that, that we've heard tonight and we heard last week as well. So that's just the pulse of the community, of the people that have talked to me. And water comes up all the time, the water rates.
So, but you do hear a lot of concerns about property tax, taxes.
Here we do. And I'm talking about, you know, in the grocery store. At meetings, we do, but not people that have stopped me on the street. And, and, you know, want, that's like.
I think property taxes are to be attended to. Go ahead.
Just a, a couple of final thoughts. What I've been seeing and hearing is people aren't so, so much opposed to the tax itself, at least the ones that I've been monitoring and listening to. It's where it's going to be spent. That's your primary concern. Finally, with respect to this tax in general, this is an opportunity for us to improve the environment of Bennington in a myriad of ways. We're only limited by our imagination. And as Bruce mentioned, our ultimate goal is to expand the property tech base, build a grand list. And if we make it a more attractive place that people want to come and live at, it's money well spent, that will benefit every property payer and property owner in the, in the town.
Well, it seems that we're, I mean, with the exception of Chad, who's inverted, though, the percentages, it seems that, I mean, the difference between 40 and 50% on tax relief, you know, and debt reduction, isn't a huge difference. And I, I guess I'm okay with either. I'm a little uncomfortable lumping economic development and marketing together, because I think we will, because I think that'll become really sloppy. I think they, I do think that economic development and marketing are really important, so I, I would encourage us to think about how we break that out. In the original, it was 30% if we lumped them together, it was 20% economic development, 10% marketing, so that was 30%. I mean, I think we should think about how, how we want to apportion that. And, you know, again, we don't know how much money it will actually have, so it, yeah, so it, it's hard, it's hard to know what to do with that. I do, I mean, I do think people are concerned about the cost of living in Bennington. So whether we call it tax relief, or debt reduction, or lowered water rates, I mean, it's the cost of living in Bennington. So I, I'm, I'm not concerned about how we frame this, and I don't know, Stu, did you have thoughts about reducing water and sewer as opposed to reducing taxes, or?
Well, I think, I think if, if in fact, some of these funds are ultimately dedicated to some of the major projects that come our way, whether it's a water and sewer facility project, or a major highway or bridge project, they can have that effect. But you have to remember that what's, what's affecting our water and sewer rates at the present time is the increase in necessary depreciation in order to properly fund the systems. And part of that depreciation is being generated by the expansion of our water system to serve people contaminated with PFOA. So that's not an expense to us, but the depreciation falls to us once those lines are installed.
Right.
And, and I think we've told folks at our last water and sewer discussions that we're probably looking at a three-to-a-four-year trend of the increases that we're seeing. Last year, it was a seven-and-a-half percent increase in the rates in water, 10% in sewer. Sewer is to accommodate the bond, the upgrade of the continuing wastewater treatment facility. Those will last three to four years, and then the rates will level off. If, in fact, in that timeframe, we've set aside monies, either through the systems or through local option taxes, where we can continue to improve the system, which also supports economic development, then I think it's a win-win, and you can start to see those water and sewer rates, if not fall, flatline, which I think is, is, in my mind, is the goal for the tax rate as well. Bring it down a little, but then flatline it, so people aren't seeing 3% to 4% increases every year in the town tax, but they're getting the services that they demand, and, and we're able to do some new and wonderful things for the community. And Stu, it bears repeating to the general public, that had we not made those repairs to our water and sewer treatment plant, it would have cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Yes. And fines from the state. The state mandated that we do this, or else? Well, certainly on the water system, we, we had deficiencies in the system that we are addressing, and the state has accepted our schedule for doing that. And we are handling that within the budget that we have. The additions to the budget are really coming from the need to budget appropriately for depreciation in the system, so that future problems are not a hard impact on the rates in a given year, because we will have set aside sufficient funds to repair and replace the systems as they fail.
And, you know, I don't know, I'm intrigued by the idea of, should we increase or decrease the amount of money we put for the park, which we know is something that we need to address? I know there's a lot of discussion around, can we have community input in the way we do the Stark Street, to really think about, you know, are we just replacing a structure to look just like it does now, or, you know, are there other, are there many other things? Or, you know, are there other, are there many other things that we could be doing with that space that would be imaginative and offer, you know, an interesting play area? And, you know, so who knows, who knows what the cost of that is? But it does feel like we are talking about next, next spring is as early as anything would be done or not?
I would think next spring is, is, if, if in fact, monies are allocated towards the Willow Park replacement, next spring is, is a time where you might actually see shovels in the ground.
Can you say, when you say next spring, are we saying spring 2021? Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes.
That's, I just think we need to be really clear about that.
Yeah, so that.
Next spring for some of us is coming up.
Next spring is about a month away.
Yeah.
Right. So, but you mean 2021?
2021.
Which is why I would say we could reduce that for this year because, but the money will go into a reserve fund and then we can make determinations based on known facts, not unknown facts. That is my thought. That's why I said.
I'm an outlier, I think, on this, but I'm, I'm willing to move my position a little bit. I, I do feel like this breaks down into two things. One, expenses that we would likely to be, we would likely have already. And two, new expenses that we're taking on. So, the, the expenses that we're likely to have already or the, the, the cost that we, that we have right now, if we are able to defer those, if we, if we're able to offset some of those, then we will be saving people taxes. And even though they will be spending more, very small amount, but a 1% options tax more if they're buying certain things, they will also see a reduction in their taxes.
Correct.
So, it feels to me like we need to balance these two things of tax relief and economic development, sort of growth, future transformation. And, and that they, they really do need to be balanced because we are, if we were to take all of this money and put it into new projects, it would be a brand-new tax. It would be on top of everything we are already collecting for taxes. If we split it, then at some level, a portion of that is going to help reduce the tax burden and another portion is going to help us grow our community. If we were to put it all into taxes, I understand the argument that it won't do anything for the grand list and that, that the, that the impact will be relatively small and it, it may not have the desired effect of actually making Bennington a more robust community, which is ultimately what we need to do to reduce our individual property taxes. So, I would look for some sort of balance between things that we are likely to, things that are kind of new and things that are existing. And I could imagine, if the split is, if I'm thinking about a 50-50 split, I could imagine that if you were to put 40% towards tax and debt reduction and 10% towards Willow Park. In my mind, Willow Park is an expense that we're going to have to face one day or the other. So, that to me goes into the column of things we have to do anyway, and the taxpayer's going to pay for it one way or the other. The other side of that is the 50% which would go to economic development and marketing. At some level, that would be a new expense to our community. So, we would be using these local options tax to create new opportunities, but at some expense. So, I'm all right about splitting it, but I, I guess I don't, I would feel like low, reducing local property taxes is a really important component of this. And even if it's a small impact, I still think we need to make an effort to try to acknowledge that a lot of people find their local property taxes hurt. So, if we could, if we could find some way to split these things, I would feel better, I'd feel best about it.
I'm, I have sort of, I don't remember which one of you said, cost of living. I've sort of like tried to switch in my brain, instead of thinking property tax, think cost of living, how to reduce the cost of living because that is spread out to everyone, not just property owners. So, that has a broader effect than property tax reduction, actually. So, I don't know if you could just switch it, switch your thinking to cost of living rather than property tax.
Honestly, I think that argues against the tax at all, Jean. I, I mean, I think that that, what you're saying argues against the tax. So, that would, you know, the, the idea of the tax is to, I mean, part of the idea of the tax is to diversify the sources of revenue to the town. So, right now, all of the revenue to the town comes from property taxpayers. I mean, we have some, some minor and minor grants and fees and whatnot, very minor, but of the, of the roughly $14 million annual budget we have.
Comes from property taxes.
Almost all of it comes from property taxes.
That's true. That's true.
Okay. So, that's, that's the nub of it.
That's true.
We have a big, big thing, piece of money we have to raise. Right now, it all comes from property taxpayers. The only, the only thing a property taxpayer can do about their taxes is to grieve them if they think they're unfair and there's a process for that, or to vote down the town budget, which we hope people won't do. And that, those are, those are not great options, you know, there's, if, if you have a, a tax that's on alcohol or on sales or something, you can choose not to.
Not to buy them.
Not to make that purchase, not to have that tax on you. But you can't choose not to pay your property taxes.
Yeah, you're right.
50-50?
Yeah.
Well, I think it is sort of 50-50 if, if we're looking at debt reduction, tax relief at 40% and Willow Park and park replacement at 10%.
Right.
If you, if one thinks of it that way.
And I do.
As those things that one has to do. I am, I am also, I'm concerned about lumping economic development, marketing.
We could split that out, though.
Yeah.
That 50% could be 10% economic develop, 10% marketing and 40% economic development.
Yeah.
Or 15, 35. I, I mean, because I am.
Chad, do you have an opinion about that since?
I, I think I already gave my opinion.
No, but on the percentages of the, of the, of marketing versus economic development?
Yeah, I mean, I think 10% marketing would double our current budget if we have all four pass. So, I think 10% for marketing.
But if all four don't pass.
Yeah, then it's different, obviously.
Then, I'm just saying, if.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
Our, our plan with marketing was 50% this first year and then moving up to 75 the next year and 100 the next year, and we still aren't close to what our competing communities are spending on marketing. So, I think if we are serious about doing marketing, keeping a steady budget of $50,000 is going to be, is, is not in the long-term going to get us what we want.
No.
So, I don't know, 15, 35 at least makes me feel like, like.
I would go with that if that makes you feel.
It does.
Okay.
It does. Just looking at the map.
So, can someone just go down where, where we are with the percentages?
So, we, we're going back and forth on a lot of these things, but the latest.
Iteration.
What's been talked about most recently is a 40% towards tax relief and debt reduction, 10% towards Willow Park, which may need to be over more than one year. And then 35% towards economic development, microloans, this, small business development or possibly big ideas as they come up. And 15% towards the marketing, which arguably this board has decided we're going to do anyway. But, but I think, because we, we have heard loud and clear that this community needs to market itself more in, in many different directions in order to grow our economic prosperity. So, that's where we are right now. Just a second, I want to do a board conversation first and then, then I'll get into the public.
Okay.
Are there other, other board comments?
Chad, how do you feel about, so, economic development, marketing, state, what are This would be more debt reduction tax.
Yeah, it would.
It would be more than you.
And less park.
Yeah, no, I think less park makes, less park definitely makes sense. I can see reducing that. But if I'm going to take.
Well, that would be a one-time only.
Yeah, and exactly, again, the way with the, the seasons fall, yeah, that makes sense, actually. But if I'm going to take, that's, that's 10% different from what I originally proposed for the, I think, the park, 20 maybe, I, I would.
30.
30. Okay, 30. I, I'm a coach.
Math teacher.
You'd be outside of the park.
You're a math teacher, huh?
I would take that 20% difference and I'd put it in the economic development. I just, I really feel we need to spend money on developing this community in something big. And I know the tax reduction people, same thing with Jean, I've been out, you know, people are saying, I want something big for this community. I want, you know, I've heard, heard so many great ideas. I think that's where a panel comes in, a local committee comes in helpful and it'd be great to say, hey, this is the money you have or this is money that's going to be set aside for something big. So, go bigger than home, I'd put the money there, but I'm one person.
Okay. Other board perspectives? So, who would like to speak first? Matt, come on up.
So.
I'm sorry, name?
Oh, Matt Willie, I own some businesses in town. So, judging from what we heard last Monday and, which was 95%, I mean, there were a couple of people and, and I totally understand what people are saying, they don't want it because they don't want to spend, you know, the extra money on one of my pizzas and stuff like that. I get all that. But majority of the people said, we didn't care about the property tax thing, right? And, and majority of the people, I, I have three businesses. I start my, start my morning, have coffee at Buck Stop, and I talk to hundreds of people. I have my lunch at the avocado pit, I talk to hundreds of people. I finish my night with a beer at Ramontos and talk to 100 people. None of them say property tax. So, it scares me so much that you come here and, and keep that 50%. It just feels like we're not being listened to at all and it's driving people like me out of this town. I got to be really honest with you because if, I, I applaud Chad for standing up and saying what he said and I appreciate it. And again, he's only one person, but it's scary because no one said it. I, I haven't had one single person come up to me and say, oh, thank God, I'm going to get a tax break on my property. I have not had one single person say that. So, I'm just, whatever, I, I'm for the, the, the big bang in this town and to get something good out there and, and actually bring people to this town and not bypass them around, I'm, I'm for that. But if you're sticking to this, I, and I don't get a vote. I live in Schaafberg, unfortunately. I only have three businesses in this town and employ a lot of people, but I don't get a vote. But if, if that's, if that's what you guys are proposing, I would say vote this town 100%. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and just to be clear, we all talk to a lot of different people in a lot of different circles and maybe I run in the cheap circles, but I hear a lot about property taxes and people I talk to, so. Laura, come on up.
Well, I just keep thinking, if you do this and give people what would be maybe at the most $200 tax reduction, will you ever be able to take it away? You know, it seems, I wonder if you've thought about that because once you have that in the, in place and it, people get used to it, I don't know if you can ever change that because people will think of it as an entitlement and something that they will always get, assuming the local option tax is, doesn't ever go away. But I'm wondering if you've thought about that.
We've thought a lot about that.
And that's another reason in my mind, not to do it, but to do something big and to, you know, use more of the money for big projects and even the park or just give people a chance to come in and give you ideas, economic development ideas or microloans. I love that idea because you, you may be getting stuck and future select boards will be, have a hard time ever changing it if they, if people think that that's going to be permanent, even if you don't say it's permanent, they'll expect it. So, that's just my, another concern I have.
We've thought about that a lot, but we've also thought about the inverse of sort of, what if you don't try to do anything to help property taxpayers? And that's, that's the sort of inverse of this.
But it's common, as everybody said, it is going to do that with economic development and growing the grand list. But it's also, growing the grand list impacts your property tax rate. So, so if we, so the hope would be we would grow ourselves out of whatever that's, that small increase, that, that small decrease that is being met by a direct, by, directly by the option tax right now. But yeah, I mean, that was, that was, that was brought up, I think, initially at business forums and it has been something that we've been thinking about. But it's, I, I think it's, I think it's a red herring in this, in this case. I don't think it's a long-term, I don't think it's a long-term problem.
Other comments from the audience? Kevin, you had your hand up? Is it no longer up or?
My pleasure.
Okay.
Again, we talk about, you know, cost of living reduction, which I like that. I think we need to do that through reducing spending. Taxes is a big thing, right? Debt, debt reduction is an interesting word because in our last board meeting, Stuart told us, we don't have any debt. We don't run in the red. And I guess that's true as long as we keep on putting up with.
He didn't, he didn't say we don't have any debt.
8, 10% sales increases. But as far as this money, if it does pass, if we get this money, I think you guys are making a mistake putting it into community development. You can ask Matt and other business owners here how hard it is to run a business, right? If there's no money, if there's no financial base, the business isn't here. I think it's very important to separate marketing from community development and I think we should be spending it on marketing. Again, 85% of our money comes from tourism in Vermont. If the people are here and spending the money, and again, we're going to increase our, our local burden, right, by this extra 1% tax. But if the people are here and the money's here, then people can open up businesses. I'm all for small businesses, but have you tried to run a business in Bennington? It's very, very difficult. This is setting ourselves up for more failure. You're going to give these people loans, the, the money's not here and they're going to fail. We're wasting our money. We need marketing, not community development. Once the people and the money are here, that allows us to run businesses and in turn, we move here and we get residents, right? That's increasing our tax listing. To do it, you're putting the cart before the horse, guys. It, it doesn't work. We've done this for the last, what, 50 years? And take a look, Bennington used to be considered a boom town. It's not a boom town anymore. We got to change our way of thinking, I'm afraid.
So, before you sit down.
Sure.
Twice, you've said community development, but we've been talking about economic development and it's a little bit wonky, but those are separate things. So, community development is very different from economic development. What we've been talking about is economic development and such as they're doing Wilmington, which is more like loans, new business development, trying to get, trying to get more and more businesses into spots and more and more things happening in Bennington. That's different from community development, which tends to be more like social services and.
Well, I, I understand what you're getting at and again, it's the small businesses, which I'm all for small businesses, but the ones that are here cannot survive. I don't see how adding more businesses and more residents, where are these people going to work? We don't have any jobs left. Look at, look at Main Street, guys. I mean, I don't know what you guys can't see about our community. We're dying. We need help and relief and I think we need the money first. And again, it's proven, it's historic, it's tourism. That's what we need to do. So, I, I think we need the money here before we talk about any pocket parks or any of these great ideas that I'd love to do. But what are you, what are you going to do with, again, you're talking about, what, 50% let's say goes into a pocket park or Willow Park? That's $500,000. Are we going to, can we do it for 500? It costs us $100,000 for our pocket park. What's it going to cost for Willow Park?
I've lost you a little bit, but.
Well, I did lost you. Again, I don't trust your spending. I think that's where we need relief and if you guys do get this money and you spend it, I hope it goes towards marketing and getting people, out-of-state people, and I don't care if they stay here, they can go home after as long as they come here and spend lots of money. Eventually, if we got a good base in the community that I dream of too, we all dream of this, you guys say you dream of it. If we had that vibrant community and money here, then people would come and spend it. But right now, we don't. So, thanks again.
Just to be clear, thank you for your comment. Just to be clear, Stuart did not say at our last meeting that, that what you said was that we don't do deficit spending. I think that was what you said. We do use debt. We do use short-term debt.
Of course we do.
As a way, as we know, well-known.
But we're not running deficits. There's a difference between debt and deficits.
That's right. So, but it's a little bit, yeah, okay.
I wanted to ask.
Come on up.
A question.
Please.
So, I'm, I'm puzzled about, so the monies, the, the, it's the third quarter of this year that is the first time, if, if everything passes, we get essentially 300,000 will come in in October. And then each quarter, there'll be 300,000 if it is as we hope. I'm curious about the process of planning how to spend and where to allocate. How is that fitting, how is that fitting together?
Well, the way I think we see it is that there's, again, a transition year, which is this first year, which would not be a full year.
Ah, so it would be just.
It would not be a full year because it would, in.
Two quarters.
In October, we would be having a much more substantial, long-range conversation with the entire community about, about how these percentages broke down. And in, in the fall, the community might say, we want to spend 100% on marketing or we, we want to spend 100%, or 50% on marketing and 50% somewhere else. So, we're, we're saying that that conversation is. So we're saying that that conversation is, should be live and should be happening every year, should be based on community priorities. The counter to that is Michael Keen's comment, that we should have a three- to five-year plan and lock it in and give people a vision to look into. And I understand that comment, and Michael's a smart guy, but I also feel like we need to balance that perspective with the perspective of democracy and the fact that boards change and community priorities change and that we need to be able to sort of adapt. So I think what we're thinking right now is that we set up some kind of centrist policies that work for everybody for a short period of time while we get to a point in time where we can have a very substantial conversation within the community about how these funds are spent. And if none of these taxes are approved, there won't be any conversation.
Right. So I have it right that essentially though, in this, the budget that we're passing here goes from July to July, and so it'll be two quarters of this new adventure that is being, so we have to sort of collapse the process and do the policies and the decisions and things like that for this, this sort of bridge year.
The bridge year is funny, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, yeah, because we're voting on this in March and the budget process would start essentially in October, yeah, it would be funny the first year, but then after that, it would make sense. Because before we do a budget, the community would be able to establish its priorities, and then the select board would understand those and, you know, accept those and bring those forward and say to our town manager, you know, bring us a budget that reflects these priorities. And here's this, here's the funding that's coming in from the options tax, but we need the whole budget to be figured around these priorities.
So for example, if Matt and I and other people sort of basically in this shorter, short year as a sense, got a much larger discussion and commitment about the idea that the taxpayers of Bennington want to pool their money instead of disperse it to basically build these ameliorations and improvements, that would be perfectly within bounds, and so that could be a discussion.
Absolutely. And the hard part about this is that democracy is somewhat based on, you know, at least when you vote people in and then we talk to as many people as we can, but that part is imprecise. And so Matt's point is true, that everybody at that last meeting was proposing, you know, we spend the money on something big. That part's true, but it doesn't necessarily reflect the whole community point of view. There are, trust me, there are a lot of people out there who would like their property taxes to be lower, even if it was just a little bit.
I completely believe you.
Yeah.
And I also imagine that politicians, I know you're not really, but in some sense you're in that category because you run for office, do evoke, we human beings evoke different conversations depending on who we are. And so my bet is that nobody ever tells me how high their taxes are, but they probably always tell you. So that's it.
Pretty much, pretty much. That's why I can't go to the farmers' market anymore.
Okay, that's really helpful. So I, again, I want to compliment us all for there's sort of, for staying a little loose and at the same time earnestly thinking of and visualizing structures. My experience is that there's such a strong desire to, this is in humans, all of us, there's such a strong desire to control.
Yes.
And there is, it's like, the more you control, the less vitality you have. The more vitality you elicit, a culture, you know, feed, et cetera, the less controlling you have, by definition. And I think it's a complicated thing, and you guys have the really tough thing of being, you know, human beings are blamers. And so you guys have the tough thing of being, in some sense, our public object of complaint. Sort of like being an owner or a boss happens to us individually in our little tiny worlds. But anyway, so thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, other comments? I saw your hand up at one point, Sarah, and no. Dane? I'll get you next, Rose.
Hi, everybody. My name's Dane Whitman, and I'm chair for the Town Democratic Party. And this weekend, we were registering voters on Main Street. It was beautiful weather, and there was nobody from Bennington walking by. It was all out-of-state tourists. So I just want to say thank you to Shannon for marketing the town. And as far as putting in a marketing fund, that could really feed the local option tax as well. And maybe as far as doing some analytics and really trying to find a sweet spot, as far as what's the right amount of money to get the best bang for your buck out of that. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think that those analytics probably do need to happen. I think, you know, Chad's asked some, or some other people have asked questions, not just Chad, but about, you know, do we know how many out-of-town people are shopping here? There are a lot of kind of things that are difficult to know right now. So I think what we're getting at is, again, an interim position. So what, what works for most people, or what, maybe it works for no people, but what is it that would be a sort of a compromise to get us through the first couple of quarters of this? It's almost time for me to wrap this conversation up, but I did offer Rose a chance to speak. Is there anybody else that wants to speak after Rose? Okay, so I'll get you next. But Rose, come on up and introduce yourself, please, and tell us what you think.
I'm Rose Delphord. Pretty much the same. From what I can understand, I have X number of dollars that I get, I have my social security. That's what I live on. It's not always spending money that I don't have, and this is where it starts. It's basic. Now, how many parks do we need in Bennington? How many is there, and how many do we need?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question, Rose.
No, I'm serious. How many have we got, and how many do we need?
I'll answer quickly. Both my children are 15 and 16, and when they were little, we loved going to Willow Park. And I would love to go there with my grandchildren there, several years down the road from now. And I would hate to see that park fall apart. So I think that's why we've made it a priority, because generations of people have played there.
Not a park. How many parks do we have?
I'm just giving an example about Willow Park, okay? Stark Street was a great park to bring back on. I think getting outdoors and providing these opportunities to people that, in this community, is community development, that's, that's going to help our community. The more parks, the better. So.
I don't believe, I don't.
We'll disagree.
How many kids are? I just think you spend money on things that you shouldn't. You can't keep spending money that you don't have. And I know, I keep saying it, but it's a fact.
So Rose, what we're talking about right now is if we had this money, how would we apportion it? So that's, that's what we're really talking about right now. So do you have any perspective or any opinions on the percentages that would break down if we were to have any money from the local options tax?
It's just throwing bad money with good, or whatever.
Okay.
How can you just, I just don't know how to explain it. It's, you know, I'm not a fancy talker or anything, but things have got to change. I know everybody says it, and it's putting parks in and putting this and that and the other. This town is nothing compared to what it used to be. And I know I said it before, but I can remember, you used to be proud to walk, you know, up street, and it's not all this stuff that was on now. I know you can't help what goes on all the time, but it's.
So we have heard this comment from you often, and, you know, you're welcome to say it, but listen, we're talking about percentages. We're talking about if we have this money, what would be the best way for Bennington to spend it? So, okay, if your answer is, don't do the local options tax, that's fine, and you can say that with your vote on March 3rd when you go to the polls.
Oh, don't worry, I know.
Okay? So thank you. Thank you for your comments.
I don't know, but it's. I just find you have more of an idea of listening to somebody talk that don't have money as opposed to people that live in this. Sorry. Just proof it.
Carrie.
So just to clarify, sorry, Carrie Fabrius, the percentages you're talking about are strictly for the, we're calling it a year, interim period, and that would be revisited every year?
Mm-hmm.
So that that could change depending on board and community input.
That's right.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, has there been any preliminary look into how much it would cost to replace the structures at Willow Park? Because I know that half a million was thrown out there, but I don't know what's been looked at.
Numbers have been.
I thought it was 250. Well, there's. It runs, it runs, depending on what you do, it runs anywhere from 150 to $350,000.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, we're 20 minutes over.
Okay. Jim's reminding me we're 20 minutes over. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
So, but what we need to do tonight at some level is to move forward with an interim spending guidelines, so that if people vote, if people vote for this tax, they would know how this money would be spent. So the last, and for the first two quarters, and then again, this would all be revisited starting in October, right? So I, we have sort of worked towards a split that some people liked and some people didn't. That's quite often a sign of compromise.
I am happy to make a motion on what I think we should do.
Sure. Why don't you make a motion for the purposes of discussion? At that point, we'll be cutting off citizens' comment and going into board comment only if it is seconded, but go ahead.
Okay. I would make a motion that we put 40% toward debt reduction and tax relief, that we put 10% toward Willow Park, we put 35% toward economic development, and 15% toward marketing.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Bruce, let it fly, buddy.
Yeah. I'll side. I'm, I'll stick my neck out. I really, I'm, I'm much more with Chad on this. I would like to see the economic development piece be higher. The only thing that would entice me to vote for those percentages would be that it's, it really is an interim, and Laura, I am worried about that notion that, that once you give it, it's really hard to not. So if, because I actually, I think we really do need a bigger shot in the arm than this gives in the, but it's just for this half-year period. So I'm still not sure that I will vote for it, but I will vote for, I understand that I agree with the spirit of it. I would really like to see much more money into economic development and because I actually think, I was out trying to register people to vote this last weekend for two afternoons, and while I met a few citizens of the town of Bennington, almost everybody was a tourist, downtown at least. So anecdotally, I think we have people coming, we need to have businesses. I wanted to see more businesses open to take advantage of these tourists who are walking around town. So that's where I think we need. So I'd be happier if it was 45 or 50% for economic development.
Well, let me just do what Bruce did at the last meeting and advertise that I am, I am up for being persuaded on this, but listen, Brandon, Brattleboro, Burlington, Colchester, Dover, Manchester, Middlebury, Rutland Town, St. Albans Town, South Burlington, Stratton, Williston, Wilmington, Winhall, Winouski, Barry, Hartford, Mount Pillarstone, Woodstock have all decided that they want this tax.
Right.
And that they are saying, we want our community to be bigger and better and stronger than it is.
I agree.
And I want this, I want this ability for our town to be bigger and better and stronger. I'm with you, Chad. I'm with you on that. I really am. And, but I feel like that it's, you know, that in order for this to pass, it needs to be a little something for everybody. So, so I'm willing to move my stake on this, but I honestly think that the taxpayers would like to know that there is really seriously some tax relief involved in it for them. So maybe the numbers are wrong, but I honestly think we could kill ourselves playing with these numbers.
Yeah.
To me, the most important thing is that this options tax, not having this options tax is like trying to compete with one hand tied behind our back. It's not that it's a zero-sum game in Vermont. It's not that one community wins and another one loses, but it, there's an element of competition, and we need to be as competitive as possible. We need to have this tax. And I, I'm less concerned about the, these percentages, although we're doing it because we were asked to do it. We're doing it because voters asked us to do it. But I'm less concerned about these, and I'm happy to move my stake if it makes people feel better about it. But I want it moved in such a way that it resonates for everybody in this, or as many people as possible in this community.
I hear you.
So I think tax relief is at least a part of that. Property tax relief.
Yeah, I think the, I think debt reduction and tax relief have to be part of it, and I think that, that people express their desires in different ways, and I think to, I think to some extent, we have heard tonight from people in this audience who feel like if this tax passes, they wanted to go toward tax relief. It may not be expressed that way, but that's, I think that's where it was going. So I, I do think that we, we do need to reduce the taxes in this town, and I think tax, I think debt reduction is going to help us tremendously. I think that's a really smart move. And I think if we can give some other tax relief, whether that, you know, whether that comes around as eventually reducing water and sewer taxes, which we hear a lot about, or whether it's reducing the property tax, which is equally, I think, of concern to people, we need to do it. And I, you know, I think we've got, I, it feels to me like there is, between economic development and marketing, that's 50% of where this money is going, 10% is going into something that is critical for this community, a park. And the rest of it goes back to the taxpayers. Taxpayers and the, and the taxpayers. So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I mean, we're talking about what we're doing in the next six months, and I think this also gives us a chance to see how it plays out, and then we can, starting in October, we're going to be having bigger discussions that I hope will allow us to think in the big ways. I mean, I think all of us were very excited in the last, the special meeting on the option tax, because it allowed us to dream and it allowed us to think bigger about what we could do if we had the opportunity to do it. And so, you know, I think we just need to, I think we need to get this rolling, and I think it needs to address different concerns that we're hearing from the public.
Other thoughts?
I just want to make it clear that I support the local option tax. I might not 100% agree with the percentages, but 50% for economic development and marketing is better than zero. You know, we need this. So I agree with you, this will help.
I agree. I'm not, I'm not overly thrilled with this, but I'm really glad that there's going to be 50% with economic development.
Well, put something forward you're overly thrilled with, then.
I just don't feel like a 40% tax relief is going to be all that meaningful. I just, I feel like there, that money could be spent on something that's more beneficial and bigger, that would make more of a splash. But I am absolutely going to vote in favor of this, of all four of these taxes, and I will vote in favor of this percentage plan. And I'm okay with it because it is temporary and that it's flexible for the future, and it gets us, it gets us off the starting block, and it'll start a conversation, and who knows where it'll go from here. So while I'm not overly thrilled, I'm, I will absolutely support it.
I'll throw out an entirely different idea. I'll throw out an entirely different idea, and that is, as Laura Block suggested, that community members come together, people that are self-selecting and approved by the Select Board, and on a quarterly basis, they look at the pot of money, and they talk to people in the public and say, where would you like this to go? And let that be determining factor.
An elected committee?
Yeah.
Elected by the public?
No, by the, by the Select Board.
Appointed.
Appointed.
For next, not for now, but for next year.
As soon as, it's approved. And then they have, you know, have community forums, open meetings.
Sure. Well, we're talking about.
Not on, where people come in and say, okay, here are some options, here are five or six options. What would you like, where would you like it to be put? So that we can actually have democracy in action, so that people can say, this is where we'd like the money to go.
I think that's what we're trying to set up, is.
Yeah, but you're, you're quantifying it in very specific amounts. I'm suggesting just the opposite. If there's a big, grand idea that people want to get behind, you've limited yourself.
But we were asked to do this.
Let me finish, let me finish.
We were asked to do this by the public.
I understand.
Okay.
Just playing devil's advocate for a minute. That's another option.
Yeah.
And the public would determine exactly where it goes.
Well, if we had a shovel-ready project that was 1.27 million, that the whole public could get around, you could potentially vote on this for that project. But that's not the case right now. So we need to set up a system that's flexible, that is, can adapt as priorities evolve, and once we.
Okay, well, I'm not getting the picture from that in here. I'm, it sounds to me as if you are being very definitive about where that's going to go.
Just for this.
Just because people want to know.
Oh, all right, I got you.
People have asked us.
The next few months.
Yeah, I've heard it. They want to know where the money's going.
Okay. So how would you spend the money if you had the money? If the tax is implemented, how would you, how would you spend it? If these aren't, if this is not, if this does not reflect the priorities of this board, change it now. Chad, speak up. Jeanne, speak up. Because if you've got a better suggestion.
I'm okay with that, as long as it, you know, allows some flexibility.
I think it does.
I mean, 50% wasn't going to make that much of a difference to people, and 40% is going to make even less. So I'm surprised that you're okay with it.
Well, who would think an old liberal like me would be such a budget hog? But, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
Taxpayers are.
What's happening here?
I don't know what's happening. The whole world's turning upside down.
But 50, it would be 50%, really, because if we reduce our short-term indebtedness, that's going to go back to.
Long-term.
Real, you know, basically tax. It's going to lower the, I mean, sort of, I mean, in its own way.
Cheshire cat's down there.
I, I guess, you know.
Guys, we're talking about six months.
I know. Six months, I think we should vote.
I think we should vote, too.
Call the question.
Let's call the question, shall we?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeanne, would you please repeat it? Or Nancy, do you have what Jeanne said the first time as a motion?
Well, sort of.
All right, I sort of have it, too, between us.
I'm going to make up my own percentage.
Okay, 40% for.
40% of the tax reduction and short-term debt reduction, 10% for Willow Park, 35% for economic development, and 15% for marketing.
Okay. Okay, motions on the floor. It has been seconded. We're calling the question. All in favor of this spending guidelines for this year, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So, it passes. I was, I'm sorry that we were unable to find something that you felt good about.
It's okay.
I tried to leave the door open to suggestions, but.
It's okay.
All right.
It's okay.
Okay. Well, we are then going to move on to our next item, agenda, on our item.
Aye. Let's hope that this works again.
Of course, it's going to work. And this is a downtown transportation grant, and I apologize that we're half an hour, more than half an hour behind, Shannon, but thank you for being willing to do.
Well, I have to be here. I apologize to Mark, because he doesn't have to be.
Yeah, we apologize to you, too, Mark.
Is that coming up? Oh, okay. Well, we'll wait just a moment. So, the reason we invited Mark Anders, who's the transportation planner for BCRC, Bennington County Regional Commission, is town staff are interested in applying for a downtown transportation fund grant, and that's due on March 9th. And we are kind of ahead of the game because BCRC has done a scoping study on a proposed project to improve Franklin Lane. And so we can use that scoping study that Mark put together for our application, and that gives us the background that we need to, and this is coming from the state. So these are state funds that the town has used for other projects, such as the pocket park that was mentioned, so that no taxpayer dollars were spent for that particular project. And the way that this, this photo of Franklin Lane is showing you why we need to work on improving it.
Yeah.
It's in rough shape, and it's, what we hope to do with this, and what the scoping study really showed, was we can look at a number of the problems with Franklin Lane and try to find a solution that can solve all of those problems. So for example, how can we make this area more pedestrian-friendly? How can we also have improved lighting for safety? And how can we also slow traffic, right? So those were kind of the main objectives of that scoping study. And what I'm asking of the Select Board tonight is that you look at the conceptual plan that Mark put together, and I'll go to that next slide, and also that you sign the resolution so that we can apply for the grant funds. This is a photo of that conceptual plan. So what we're looking at is, right here's South Street. This is the area of kind of phase one that we want to apply for this grant. It's a 50% fund matching grant from the state, so the other 50% we would raise through each time labor from the town, because our own town staff would be helping to do the construction that's necessary, and we would also be using the parking reserve fund for this. So, this would be create a herringbone pattern that creates a more pedestrian alleyway here. And also, these little yellow pieces are new lighting that's being installed, and some landscaping, and this is a parking place for Jay's Art Shop. And the other reason that I think makes a compelling argument to the state why we can really use this as an improvement, and why we need it as a pedestrian area, is this whole area right there is going to be a new park, the Plutton Square Park, this part of the Plutton redevelopment. And so we want people to be accessing this park from both areas of Franklin Lane. And right now, it's really not that safe to do that. So that's the proposed project, and, oops, sorry. I'm not used to going forward with this. How do I get to the next? This just breaks down what I was just talking about, the proposed area, replacing the asphalt pavement with herringbone pattern pavers, installing a raised planter, five new pole lights, and we would be applying for $100,000 from the state with a 50% match from the town. And I have Mark here to answer any questions about the plan, since he put it together.
Okay. So, can you go back to the, the photo, or the rendering?
Sure.
Is it?
Sorry, let me go back.
That's okay. Everybody remembers it. Mark, is it, is it only for pedestrians? Is it for traffic? Is it two-way traffic, one-way traffic?
The traffic pattern would stay the same. It would still be one-way entering from South Street, and it would also be for pedestrians. So it would be like a shared street, what they call a shared street.
Okay.
It's a shared street now, it just looks horrible.
Right. And where, can you just show me and everyone else where the entrance is to the parking lot behind the town office?
Show me on there. Basically, this is the alley.
Right.
And then, this is the house that's right by the town office, and the parking lot is here. So this is very, it's a very big, it's a very.
Oh, the town office is, is beyond?
It's down below.
Okay, so where is the road that enters into the town?
It's the dotted red line.
Thank you.
It's where you would turn right into the municipal parking.
It's not even on this map, the road.
It isn't on the map, it's off the map.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. My other question was, pavers? Go ahead.
Yeah, so really, the big change was the, is the pavement, because right now, it's kind of dilapidated asphalt, so now we would change it to this herringbone pattern, which is actually now in front of. There's this herringbone pattern here, so we basically just compare it to.
There's herringbone pattern now on South Street?
In front of where the South Street Cafe was, that sidewalk is actually herringbone.
Okay. I guess I'm just, I don't know a lot about this. All I know is what I see, and pavers tend to heave, and they're pulling the brick up and having to relay it. I guess I'm wondering if Mike considered stamped concrete instead of pavers?
That's a good point. I mean, the pavers, these pavers have held up pretty well in front of, on that sidewalk. Obviously, there'd be some trucks on it. You know, I'm not an engineer, so I can't really speak to that, but I've seen many examples of pavers like this, which do hold up pretty well. So, I think, we'll, we will have to have civil engineers design this. You know, this is just a sketch.
Okay.
And, you know, they can.
I'm a little ahead of myself. In other words, the questions are a little ahead.
And I think historically, when we did the initial brick pavers along the street, we set them in sand, which turned out to be not a very good idea. The sand filters out ultimately, you get sinking and movement, frost heaves, impact. So I think if these were laid down, they would more likely be laid into some sort of material that would set them in place.
I'm sorry if my questions were too detailed for this juncture.
No. Any other questions about the?
What's, what's the, so you say there's further design work to do. Is this enough to get the application in?
Yes.
And then the application is approved, then the further design work happens, once we know that the funding's available?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I think the concept, or the general question for us tonight is, do we want to improve Franklin Lane? Are we willing to put a little bit of town money into it to make the 50% local match in order to get the $100,000 from the state? Seems like a pretty easy question, but what's, what are the thoughts? If there are none, I would certainly accept a motion. We do need to, we need to have a motion to apply for this grant and to waive the reading for signature. Have I got that right, Stuart?
Waive the reading of the resolution and sign.
And waive the reading.
I would move that, inasmuch as I really want to see the lighting go in.
Yeah.
Yes, I would second it, and extremely happy to see the lighting.
It's downright dangerous right now.
So we'd love to have a, you know, as, as the final designs begin to get close, I think we'd like to have that conversation with you, too.
Sure.
And so, you've always been wonderful about that, and we'd look forward to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to call the question. All in favor of motion to apply and waive the reading, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, bring it. Franklin Lane will thank you, and so will we.
Yeah.
The next item on our agenda is a warming shelter update. This is something that is, has been brewing for a while. We had a, we had a group approach us in December about a very critical situation that we had going on, and we've been working hard on it as a town, but working with partners on this. And one of the new and exciting partners that we're happy to have, well, it's not a new partner, but one of the new individuals that we're happy to have and excited to have with us is Scott. And Scott, would you like to come up and introduce, yeah, either one, come up and introduce yourself, and while Scott is getting, Winslow's getting settled, I would ask Jeanne, just to, if you would be willing to sort of help Scott with this item, so that the two of you can kind of give us an update on where we are in terms of moving this really important social service forward.
Well, yeah, and I think.
I have some comments ready, Jeanne, if you want to sort of follow me.
I would like, yes. That's what I was going to, what I was going to say is that Scott and I have been at both the large continuum of care meeting and the breakout group for the cold weather shelter, and I'm really glad that Scott was able to be here tonight. And so, why don't you introduce yourself, and go ahead and share what you want to, and then Bruce and I can, can add as well, since we're.
Right, right, sure. Yeah, so I am Scott Winslow. I am the new director of GBICs, the Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services. And I have a disclaimer, I wanted to start with a disclaimer and a pitch. My disclaimer is that GBICs is not a housing agency. That is not one of GBICs' programs. However, and this is my pitch, GBICs has received generous financial support from a number of community members to assist with sheltering the homeless, as a lot of the people that we do work with do have housing issues. And we are now using those funds as a resource of last resort to shelter people with no other options, such as when the state's motel voucher program is not, is not applicable, or when the homeless shelter is full. There are lots of examples of when the system as it is may not be working. And there's broad agreement that the housing discussion should be happening at the Continuum of Care Housing Solutions Committee, which is what Jeanne was referring to. That's a longstanding group of representatives from housing and housing-related organizations. Especially, it's a good idea to keep the discussion in that group, especially when it comes to accessing state funds that have to be directed either to the Continuum of Care Committee or to the Bennington Coalition for the homeless, I should say, the Bennington County Coalition for the homeless. The last meeting was Friday, February 14th, and that was reported in the Banner shortly afterwards. If you may have read in the Banner, the result of that meeting is two new committees. One is set up to address the state's proposed changes to the General Assistance Program that's going to bring an end to the motel vouchers as a use for emergency housing, and to direct funding to local communities to create local solutions. There is going to be a public hearing on the state's proposed changes on, at the library in Bennington on March 5th at 2:00 PM. So the public is welcome to provide input at that meeting. Just an aside on the motel voucher programs, motels on a per-night basis are two, even the least expensive motels, are two to three times more expensive than rent for a decent apartment. And motel, motels also don't solve the structural problems of homelessness, they just house people temporarily. So that, so again, one of the committee, new committee is to address the hotel voucher program changes. The second committee is to address creating a warming shelter or some other emergency solution in Bennington. Both of these new committees are going to be reporting back to the Continuum of Care for final decisions. The warming shelter meeting met on Friday, the 21st. I don't have notes to identify all the people that were there, but the meeting included representatives from the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless, Brock, the Bennington Housing Authority, the Red Cross, the Select Board, Jeanne and Bruce, I know, were both there, the Interfaith Council, and GBIC. One of the comments that we made at that meeting was that emergency shelter, warming shelter, however we want to describe it, is just one small piece of a whole spectrum of housing issues and housing needs. And unfortunately, there is no instant solution to emergency shelter, and that's frustrating to a lot of people. You know, we have said, why can't we open this space, or why can't we open that space? Why can't we do it tonight, or last week, or 10 years ago? And there's a host of barriers. And with all of the housing professionals at one table, we hope to overcome those, but it's not something that we can answer, you know, today, or in a very short. it's not something that we can answer, you know, today, or in a very short time. We did, at last Friday, we decided to work on a tiered approach with shorter and longer-term options. The shortest-term option right now is to continue to use GBIX's emergency funds to shelter people on an emergency basis, um, as a last resort when they have no other options. Um, we have also been discussing, trying to create a pop-up. We talked a little bit about trying to pull that off this year before the winter season ends. That doesn't seem very likely, but it's something that we're, we're looking into. And then progressing to a pilot program, and then eventually to a more permanent solution, such as the Armory or other ideas that have been suggested. Um, we are inviting outside experts who are running, currently running well-run programs and shelters in other communities to come to Bennington to meet with us, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We tried to, uh, see what we can learn from them. Um, and this committee would also like to invite local, other local individuals or organizations, not just to weigh in, but, um, folks that would like to do the work of creating the new shelter or the new solutions for emergency housing. Um, if you're interested in that, or if anyone listening to this is interested in that, I can get you connected, or Jeannie, or Bruce can get you connected to the group. And the next meeting is Friday, the 28th. So that's my update. Jeannie, did you want to add or clarify anything?
Yeah, well, I think you did a really nice job. Um, I think, uh, it's been really helpful to have, uh, other concerned groups and individuals attend the meetings in addition to the professionals who work on this day in and day out. And I think, as, as you implied, if this were easy to have solved, it would have been solved already.
It would have been done.
Yeah, so, you know, from the town's position, I think, you know, we are there to both encourage and support, uh, getting a continuum of care in place that, that really takes care of the gaps, identifying them and figuring out how we can do this. Um, and I, I think bringing in, uh, people who've successfully done this in other communities is, is very helpful. Uh, we are one of the few, um, communities in the state that has a permanent shelter. Most communities, even Rutland, only has an emergency shelter. They don't have hereabouts shelter. So we, in some ways, we are, um, in some ways, we're ahead of this discussion, and in other ways, we have significant gaps, as we know. But I think that the town is there to encourage and support, we're that, we're there, and I know David Fox has already served this function, to make sure that people are aware of zoning regulations and also codes, so that whatever we do is properly, is properly placed, and also, we make sure that, that people are safe, um, that are using the shelter, and, and also supervising the shelter. And then, you know, I think the third thing we can do is we can roll up our sleeves. And, and I think, uh, just to reiterate what you said, uh, you know, that it's one thing to complain about it, but if we want to see change, then we actually need to be there and, and be part of, of the process of making sure it happens. So I'm, you know, I'm, I think it was a really great group that met as a subgroup. Um, I think it was people that wanted to see action, and, and, you know, so I'm, I'm pleased that, that things are moving as quickly as they are at this point.
Bruce, do you have anything to add?
Just that it's, um, for those who think that, that, you know, we can just open up things, uh, I want to make sure that when, when we open up this kind of, of a shelter, emergency shelter, that the folks there are safe. And safety, I, I understand that there's a, a balance here, but that's, that to me is absolutely critical. I am happy that GBIX is using its money as a, as a source of last resort for folks who really need it on times when there isn't other help available. I think that's pretty much, I think, I'm, I'm feeling very positive about what can come out of that working group.
It's a difficult time with the state changing a lot of rules, too. So as, you know, as Scott said, and as Jeannie said, that things are changing drastically this year with the way the state does things. They're trying to push a lot of money, quarter of a million dollars down into Bennington to a local service provider to do what the state had previously done. And that's a huge change in and of itself. So it's really good to have everybody on board, and Scott, I cannot tell you how glad I am to have you leading GBIX at this point. I can't thank you enough for the work that GBIX does, but in particular, for what you're going to bring to this organization. So, Jim?
Um, I'd just like to reiterate to the general public that, that, you know, there's a hue and cry when Terry died, as well there should have been.
Yes.
And unfortunately, it took, um, to get here. And, you know, I, I thought that something like this would have to happen, but people, the people of Bennington should also know that this has not gone unaddressed. For several years, many of us around this table have done everything we could to get other churches involved, and they, for their own reasons, didn't want to take on the liability, which is understandable. But boy, it flies right into the face of, uh, calling yourself a Christian if you can't help.
Jim, so we're gonna, we're gonna not point fingers at this point. We are done with pointing fingers, and we are gonna move forward and get this thing done.
Can I, can I add one more comment on?
As long as you're not pointing fingers at anybody, because...
I don't, I don't think so.
Whatever mistakes were made in the past, we're moving forward, and we're getting this done, we're, we're...
My, my, my final comments are just that, I, I think this, the problem, in spite of the attention that it's been getting in the last several weeks, is nothing new to this community. Um, and I do think there's real frustration among people that are concerned, you know, why can't something be done? And again, the answer is, if it were easy, it would already have been done. And I'll add that, um, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
I'll jump in and say that, you know, we are, we are, that on your easy point.
Yeah.
We want to do everything we can as a town board to make it easy, and we are happy to, you know, our, I know our town planner has been offered his services and has been, um, you know, ready and willing to kind of go through lists of buildings, lists of potential locations, lists of zoning districts where it's possible. Uh, now, this is not a, a function that a town can, can itself perform, but this is a function this town would very much like to support partners in performing.
I recovered my train of thought.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little bit optimistic now for two reasons. One is the, the attention that's been on the issue recently, and this, the proposed changes that are coming down from the state. Those two things together at this time, I think, provide an incentive or, or an opportunity to, to really do something meaningful at this time.
Yeah. And we have good leadership in the, Stephanie, in the homeless, um, coalition, and, you know, they've expressed an interest in, in being very helpful, uh, and so I think there is reason for optimism, we just have to keep it moving as quickly as possible, but, um, thank you for that update. And anything else you'd like to add before you?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was just, I, I, as many of you know, I ride the Green Mountain Bus to and from work. You probably didn't know that, but I do. Um, and I believe, I know, that they're part of the transportation piece. When I think a homeless person ends up at the hospital and then they need to be transported somewhere, they often call Green Mountain Bus and they have to come in, you know, day or night.
I don't know the details, but that's correct. They are part of the transportation.
Right, so I guess I'm encouraging you, I talk to the drivers all the time, to include them in your planning process for transportation.
Right, good.
Brian Maroney is the director now at Green Mountain Bus.
Yes, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Scott, thank you for joining us. I'm sorry we're so far behind in the agenda, that's on me.
That's all right.
But thank you for coming, and we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Uh, the next item on our agenda, item number nine, we're getting there, people, is the Armory Town Land Exchange final reading. Stuart, what have you got for us here?
Well, you have this in your packet, and we discussed it at the last meeting. Uh, this is a real estate exchange agreement. Uh, it is actually not a real estate closing, that allows the town and the Vermont National Guard to perform their due diligence, looking at, from the town's perspective, the armory building, uh, and, and the condition that it is now in, and for the National Guard to be able to take a look at our 22.9 acres on Bowen Road, and, uh, although they do have a preliminary design already in place, uh, to really do their due diligence to make sure that their readiness center, when it's able to be built, would fit on the site on Bowen Road. Uh, it is a straight-up exchange of properties. Uh, this allows us to move towards closing. Uh, it's not a closing document itself, uh, and realizing that even after the closing, the, the Armory, uh, the Armory will be occupied by the National Guard anywhere from two to four years after the closing, in a leaseback provision, no cost to the Guard, while they go through their design and financing process with the federal government. So I'm looking tonight for you to authorize me to sign this real estate exchange agreement, which really gets the ball rolling.
So at our last meeting, opinions were expressed, I think, by most of the board, that this is an incredible opportunity. If, if we have any complaints, it's just that it takes too darn long, uh, you know, we'd love to have it happen faster, but obviously, we, beggars can't be choosers in this particular situation. We just have to, we just have to let it come at its own pace, and I think we are, um, I don't know if I speak for the whole board, but I suspect I do, that we'd like to see this happen, uh, as soon as possible.
So I would make the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion's on the floor to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement. Um, any further discussion?
It's exciting.
It's exciting? Okay.
Yep.
Great. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Stuart, for bringing us that. I know that that's been a long time in the building, and involves a lot of relationships over the years, but thank you for making sure that that, uh, has come our way. Now, item number 10 is the manager's report, and Stuart, um, what have you got for us tonight?
Well, I'm gonna keep it really short tonight, because we are running so far behind, but, uh, for those folks who've been asking, uh, I'm looking for the board's approval to allow the St. Patrick's Day Parade to take place on Sunday, March 15th. Uh, lineup will begin at 11:00 AM, the parade kicks off at noon. Uh, police coverage, and the Bennington Rural Fire Department will provide a traffic, traffic control. Uh, I need a motion to approve closing Main, North, and River Streets while the parade passes. Uh, this is not a full closure, but a rolling closure, as I understand it, uh, but it does need your approval to allow it to take place.
All right, so anybody opposed to a St. Patrick's Day Parade?
No. Miss Irishman, no. Motion to, uh, accept the action requested.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have a second?
What's a rolling closure?
Means that the, the, the traffic will be held up as the parade moves along, but allowed to follow along.
Gotcha, oh, I'll second that.
Okay, we have, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, any conference, any discussion?
Heck, no.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Stuart.
Thanks, and that's all I'm gonna do to you tonight.
Aye, aye.
Good.
Okay. Yeah, we, we can get our other updates, uh, later. So we're, we're gonna move into item number 11, which is updating of the agenda. This is all gonna be a little bit odd, because we are, everybody knows that Town Meeting Day is coming up on March 2nd. Hopefully, um, you got some times for us there, Stuart?
Uh, we're looking at, uh, March 9th, uh, now. Uh, we have a...
I'm sorry, Town Meeting Day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some times for us on Town Meeting Day?
Town Meeting, our, our, our Town Meeting will start at 7:00. Uh, the school systems will, I think, begin at 5:30, if I'm not mistaken, and each will take about a half hour to run through their particular town meeting. We come in last, um, at 7:00 PM, and, uh, this year, basically, the agenda is the same, but the floor meeting, set Select Board salaries, uh, here, they report to Town Officers, which is basically a review of the annual report and the audit, and then any other business that is brought before the board. Jason Morrissey is the moderator, and he will be present at the meeting, uh, and once that meeting is over, uh, we will adjourn to Tuesday, uh, for voting.
Okay.
Which includes the presidential primary.
Presidential primary and all of our local voting, important voting on Tuesday, March 3rd.
Or now, early voting is available.
Or now, early voting is available. So Stuart, as far as our upcoming meeting notes go, um, the House, what have we got?
We, we have the SBMC, uh, uh, land question, uh, which will be coming to us, uh, and we also are currently planning a presentation by the Y, uh, because we had to push them back, because our February agendas were somewhat long, uh, and at that same time, we hope to have the staff follow that with a presentation on the, uh, recreation priorities, which is something we were charged with.
What, are you looking at that for March 9th?
March 9th, yes.
Um, because we also invited workforce development to come. So we have a present, we have a workforce development presentation that Shannon has put together for the 9th, so...
I didn't have that on my notice, that's all.
Yes, uh, in fact, it's on our minutes from last, last meeting.
Shannon's already put that together.
And it's already, yeah, so it is put together, and so I'm wondering if we can do recreation and YMCA on the 23rd, which is that next meeting. I'm just thinking if we have three presentations, if we...
Well, I, I, I do what you asked me to do.
Yeah, this is why we're having this conversation. So, uh, the, this is a, this is a funny meeting, it will be in between, this is the time when we normally just have one meeting and then go to reorganization, but we've decided to do two meetings.
Yes, you're gonna stay on your regular schedule, which would be March 9th and the 23rd.
Appreciate that.
Uh, yeah, of course, you're not messing anything up. Right. Yeah, try to get everything we can out of you, Chad.
If it's two and a half hours every two weeks, we don't want to see what a month long.
I'm with you on that one, all the way, Jeannie.
All right. Were the hospitals staying on, workforce development staying on? Stuart, the question is, does the Y, Y presentation and the recreation priorities...
Certainly, we can push the recreation priorities, that's a stand, staff presentation.
And we've asked you to do that.
And I will reach out to the director of the Northern Berkshire Y. I don't know, unless they have a conflict, why they wouldn't be willing to push it back. It'd be nice to have the two together, I think.
Let's, let's see if we can get the two together, we'll see if we can do them on the, on the 24th. Okay, 23rd.
23rd.
Yeah. Okay. Other business from the board, is there anything that people have? Let's start on my left. Chad, you got anything tonight?
Uh, Pops concert's coming up, uh, so tickets go on sale next Monday. I know it's the one concert everyone asks us about every year, uh, so the same website that you've used, if not, just Google Mount Anthony Tickets, it pops up quicker than the longer website, um, but they go on sale Monday more, next Monday, 7:00 AM.
That's great. Uh, Jeannie, anything for you?
No.
No? Jim? Bruce?
Uh, no.
Jane?
I just wanted to make sure that people did hear, early voting is available, and you can just stop by the town clerk's office between 8:00 and 5:00, Monday through Friday. And she often comes in on the weekend.